This over. I want to make sure I can see everyone.
Yeah, click your participants.
Okay. I have it. Do we have thirteen people here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so Susan, we're gonna go ahead and get started because we have like thirteen people here and I don't want to keep people too long on this meeting. Can everyone hear me clearly?
Yes.
I'll have to put on headsets. Okay, great. Okay. So I want to say good evening, everyone. Welcome to Community Board Three's Budget Priorities Meeting for 2021. I'm asking that everyone that's associated with a organization to please put your names in the chat so we know that you are in attendance.
Everybody should put their name in.
Everyone that's a part of any organization, please put your name in the chat.
Or or not.
Or not, or not. Either way, please put your name inside the chat so we know that you're here. Susan, do we have a shared screen?
Why do we need a shared screen?
For the first.
It's nothing we need to share. I have no, we have, we have nothing to share.
Okay. So we're gonna go ahead and get our meeting started for today. So as you know, the budget priorities is something that we review on the community board. We work very hard on them leading up to this month of September. As we look at the priorities, we put in place organizations that are in need of support. And so we try to prioritize those that are in greater need first. And this is where we come together to explore that. Susan, do you have anything to add?
Sure. So the priorities are divided into expense and capital. Capital are like most of the parks' agenda items, like reconstruction of a park. Any new building would be capital. And expense is generally like hiring staff or programmatic expenses. So our budget priorities are different from when the council members have their budget participation. Ours are funding for agencies. So Alicia mentioned organizations, so organizations that get contracts from the agencies. Those contracts are based on funding for specific programs. So what we're looking for is on the agencies, what they're, where they need to, where we need to advocate for a larger budget. We don't advocate for the most popular or most important items because those are already assured. We advocate for budget items that are in danger or need more money. In parks specifically, we wouldn't advocate for something that's already funded. The construction may have not have started, but it's already funded. We're advocating for projects that are not yet funded. And again, in agencies for programs that need either more money or in danger of losing money. And if there's no other questions, that's that's kind of what I have to say. And somebody just said people are waiting to get in. There is nobody waiting to get in at this point.
I don't see anyone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm letting everybody in as soon as they come in.
Yeah. So maybe perhaps they did not follow the link properly?
I don't know. Yeah, I had somebody tell me they couldn't get in either, and I don't see anybody waiting.
Right.
Nobody waiting. Maybe they could be instructed to go to the community board website and it has the hearing with the link on there. I mean, some people are getting in and some aren't, so I have to assume that something is not happening, that they're.
We accidentally clicked into the thirtieth one Zoom and then then realized it was the twenty-seventh, so maybe some people are calling into the thirtieth accidentally.
Perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, that's the bylaws committee.
So more people, more people are joining now.
Yeah, we, I see them now. We have, yeah, we have seventeen so far. So I see that people are coming little bit by little bit.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we're ready if you want to start calling on people. We should probably tell them to raise their Zoom hand if they would like to testify on a priority.
Yes, okay. So I'm gonna take people as I see them, so go ahead and start raising your hands so that I can call you in. Okay, and I ask that everyone please stay on mute until I call your name. Thank you so much. Okay, who would like to go first? Go ahead and raise your hand.
Lauren, Lauren has raised her hand.
Okay, I didn't see it. Okay.
Click on the participant so you see the list on the side.
Yeah, I see it, Susan. I just don't see her hand raised. I'm sorry.
Alicia, you want me to call on people and just?
Oh, yes, I just, yeah, I see Lauren. I did see her hand. Okay. Thank you. Lauren, please state your organization.
Hi, thank you. I am with the Seward Park Conservancy and was hoping to just, you know, ask for, you know, some, some consideration for some funding for the park for the coming year. There's a couple of areas that we would really like to be able to continue to focus on. One is definitely on more maintenance staff for the park and potentially a dedicated gardener, which we had had probably about a year ago, and that gardener was reassigned to another park. And so we're sort of, would love to be able to have that reassigned back to us and have that as a possibility. Also, we're looking to try to, I mean, with the gardener would be able to also, we would be able to get some, maybe some more attention on the landscaping along Essex Street so that we could have some more increased visibility from the street side into that little promenade that goes along the fountain. Because we're, we're finding that a lot of people have been hiding things in the bushes. We've had some, some, there's been some things that we've been trying ourselves actually to go out with clippers to try to clear that up, but it would be great if we could have, you know, again, with some more maintenance staff and garden, maybe a gardener that maybe be able to be addressed. And also, we're still looking to try to get some funding to restore that amazing fountain that's been there on Essex Street for, you know, decades. It's, it's something we would, we really want to be able to do. It's something we're still very focused on to kind of, you know, either restore that to a working fountain or at least just restore it to, you know, as it was historically. And there's a few small areas in, actually in the playground areas, we, you know, there's a, one of the seals in the play area, the fountain of it, in the small children's area, we would like that to be repaired. So there's just a number of things that we're sort of looking to potentially have prioritized if, if possible for the coming year.
Okay, Alicia, can I answer some of her comments?
Yes, go ahead.
So some of those things, so I should have mentioned, I'm sorry. Is the, the Zoom was talking to me. I should have mentioned that the fist, the funding we're looking at now will start in July of next year. And Lauren, some of the things that you're asking for, like some of the repairs, are smaller items and possibly can be done a lot earlier. So when it comes to something like a repair or the need for visibility, which is a safety issue, if you would email the community board about those, perhaps we can help you a lot sooner than having it be just on the budget.
That would be fantastic. Thank you so much. I'm just taking notes. That's me just typing away here, so thank you for that. I'll definitely get on that. We'll do that this week.
Thank you, Lauren.
No, thank you.
Okay, next we have Gina T. Gina, state your organization.
Hi, so I am actually speaking on behalf of some of the dog owners here in the Two Bridges area. And I would like to request consideration for expanding or improving the two dog runs in the Two Bridges area. I know people have raised complaints about this in the past, but due to its proximity to the skateboard park, it is always filled with glass. There's also, you know, very regular homeless people that sleep there, that leave their garbage there, that leave drug paraphernalia there, and it is just completely unsafe for dogs. There's also no access to fresh water or like a hose to clean it and keep it, you know, a little maintained. We have a pretty strong community in this area of dog lovers. I believe we have a petition with change.org that has about five hundred signatories. So just looking for some consideration there on ways to improve that experience for dog owners.
Can I ask questions? Could you mention the two dog runs? What are the two dog runs?
So it's, they're right next to each other by Coleman Park. They're kind of two little triangles that are not connected. They're just off of the, off of the skate park. One is a dirt one, which is, is always very, very dirty. And then the other one is a concrete one that is used by the skateboarders for drinking and literally just throwing their garbage. So if there is an opportunity to either combine them or redesign the space and have more opportunities to maybe like maintain them, that would be amazing.
So both of the dog runs are in Coleman Park?
Yes.
So I, sounds like you're asking for two different things. One is funding to redesign and renovate the dog park. And the other is you need immediate maintenance help.
Correct.
Can I ask a question also? Is there proper disposal of the dogs' poop and stuff like that? I'm sorry.
So there, there's never any poop bags. The community has actually come together to raise money for poop bag disposal. Not the bags and also the holders. The holders get stolen at least once a week. So, you know, if there's something that's more permanent, maybe they're one of the metal boxes, you know, and we could even refill them ourselves. But that's been an issue. Garbage cans are, you know, either like knocked over or they're taken again into the skate park. But there isn't the opportunity to clean it. Like I said, no hose or, or water source there.
Can I add on to Gina's comments? I'm part of the dog community as well down here in Lower East Side. My name is Grover. And, I mean, she has mentioned the two parks that we, I don't think that there's much that can be fixed about the park because they, again, like it's, there's so, everywhere from the trains, it's, and it's right next to the skate park. It's very small. So it's not really conducive for the dogs in the area, and there are a lot more dogs since the community has been growing. A lot of, a lot of the, the dog owners have for, I've been here for over thirty-five years. And even before I had a dog, dog owners always after hours would use the baseball field that was there. So it's a very large area with grass and the dog owners have been using that. Sometimes it's kind of allowed, sometimes it gets ticketed. It's, so it's been a little bit kind of vague around us being there. But it's a great area and it's not really utilized. It's very underutilized for what it's intended purposes. So I would want to propose possibly redesigning that space and kind of coming up with something where there could be a park for the community plus a better dog park.
So if I could just say that's, it's premature for a budget issue because first it would have to come to the community board for that space to be used for the dog run, but I have put the parks manager in contact with you. So as a preliminary, if the two of you haven't talked, you should be doing that.
Yeah, we reached out before and we haven't heard back yet.
Well, then let me know that and I will make sure that conversation is, is continued. Because for a new park, that would have to come to the community board before it became a budget issue.
What, what would we, so we would speak to Jamil about that in terms of that would be our kind of request?
You and I, if I will, we're in contact with each other. I will do that with you offline since it's not a budget issue. But if you don't hear from me, please just shoot me an email.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Gina and Grover. Next, do I have any other hands?
I know Kay has some issues.
Kay, are you gonna raise your hand for some stuff? I don't see.
I just saw somebody maybe raise their hand.
Okay.
Tariq.
No, that's F. Brown.
Yeah, that's, that's me. Sorry, I'll start video. I apologize. My, my son is screaming in the background. Well, first, thank you for having this meeting, well, having it and having it open for the community and taking the time out to do this. Second, I'm, my name is Fran Brown. I'm actually, I'm a mom of a toddler that goes to school around here. I live in the Seward Park area and moving recently from Stanton Street, actually. And I just, I volunteer with Muffanda Kalunga Garden within the Saturday Roosevelt, which I started this past year because my son can't apologize if he's in the background screaming. But he loves trees and that's what got me into volunteering with the garden. And one of the things that I wanted to fast track was the Rivington Playground. I know that there's, I believe there's a budget there, which, and we've been going to that park. I had pictures of him from infancy before the construction really came up and he, we, he loves it. And that's what got me into volunteering at the garden across the way. And one of the small things I think that we could just do is add like a sign that says no adults specifically because I know it was illegal for adults to just kind of loiter there pre-pandemic. And the pandemic obviously caused for a need for outdoor spaces, which I completely understand and don't want to take away from people. But the issue becomes when it's midday and there's a, I'm there with my kid or there's a group of daycare kids that are there and there's just some people that are leering or just people that shouldn't be there. And just, that causes for concern as an, as a parent, let alone little kids that are just kind of absorbing it. They're not really understanding what's going on.
I'm gonna have you to please send that. We have a, a couple of playgrounds. We're asking for that right now. And it's an immediate complaint issue. So if you will send that,
happily.
we can, we can request that right away.
Sure, because, you know, it's, again, I understand the, it's a trick, it's a bigger problem. And the parks, those are a few public spaces that we have, so everyone uses it. But it's just like, just give us a break when the kids are there, like with their caretakers, with their family, just, just a little, a little bit of money towards those signs helps us call like people that could help as far as get the loiters out. And, you know, things like fixing the playground pavement. I understand, again, that there's a bigger budget allocated to this. You guys did a great job with the Luther Golic Playground under Delancey, of like under the Williamsburg Bridge. That's a beautiful playground. I know that there was a time and effort involved, and I'm like, that would be.
Community did that.
Well, I know, I'm just, I'm just a one mom speaking, speaking for the specific park which I lived near for almost eight years. So that's why I'm, I'm, you know, I'm trying to raise my hand towards allocating money towards that and just getting the same people behind that play structure would be really nice. It's new, it's not a lot of places to hide things. It incorporates trees and basketball courts and fun, exciting places for kids to play. And not only kids, it's just teenagers as well. Like, I mean, as teenagers should be allowed to like feel safe in a park, you know, even they get rowdy sometimes because it's part of being a teenager, but at the same time, you know, fix it. Start fixing it. It's the little things that go a long way. And, you know, things like the sprinkler system in the summer. You said the money will be allocated towards, things will, will be.
This is, so this budget we're looking at now is for projects that will start in July. Yeah, next July. So I do believe the Rivington Playground has finally been funded. I'll have to check.
Yes.
It will take, it will take a while.
It is fully, it is fully funded.
Thank you.
I, I think, I think she's asking for a fast track.
Which is probably something that we unfortunately can't do. But, but, you know, certainly any little things like signs.
The little things, signs, okay.
Repair that, you know, send us an email.
Okay, like things like when the sprinklers, the few times it's on, if it happens to be on, just giving someone the key to like properly close it so it doesn't leak into Stanton Street kind of thing.
Tell us the problem and we'll see, you know, I can't say how it would be fixed, but we'll certainly try to work with Parks Department fixed.
Yeah, we know, we know that that sprinkler has been a problem for years. I live right across the street from there, so I know.
I, I wasn't too far from you, so I know too. It is what it is. I called it Lake Rivington. Everyone's like, it's a puddle. I'm like, it's a lake. Like that gets to lake level, so.
Yeah.
Thank, again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I'll send in what I need to.
Thank you so much. Okay. I see Rayner, Rayner Keller?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, of course.
Okay, my name is Rayner Keller. I'm also with the Finday Kalunga Garden, a volunteer there. And I would like to see more cleanup now that they have installed those tables in front of the, in, on the passageway between Forsyth and Christie. It's always dirty and I would like to see the people cleaning up there. And I would like to see the, 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 the garbage can, the garbage, that garbage disposal and the children's playground is always overflowing. And there is no other garbage cans around that area. And it would be nice to have something to, somewhere to put the garbage, even if we clean it up ourselves. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Rayner. Okay, who's next? Kay, you want to be next?
Yeah, I could be. I, I mean, I, I'm trying to keep this just to the budget priority, so definitely the fixing the crumbling walls of Delancey Broom Grand. We have this on our list. And generally speaking, it's so expensive, we tend to push it to the bottom because there's never enough money for it. But I, I will put it in again. It's also that area has become increasingly just unsafe to walk in. So I, I'm not sure where this fits in, you know, but lighting was supposed to be fixed. I don't know that it reaches to the Capitol level, but we are in an extreme. You know, we were having extreme situations in at least this park and a few others, but I think I, if I was gonna, overall, it's still the, connected to the Stanton Building, which did get money for renovating the bathrooms. The interior is, I would still advocate to have the interior redone to make it ready for a community space and have that spray shower area be enclosed with a fence connected to the playground, which the commissioner did say he would do. So I think everything else, I don't know if it rises to, you know, does, do we get a mobile shower bus? Does that count for parks? I don't think so. I don't know, Susan. I mean, I think you know the situation well, well enough. Yeah, as do you, Alicia. So I don't know if things rise to that level. I wonder if there's more of a, an entire CB three parks issue that would cover especially parks that will not have advocates for them, although I'm not sure the advocacy works all the time, but.
It doesn't work without advocacy.
Yeah, that's true too. But I guess I would, I would say as, just as a citizen that I would love to see us look again at the parks in CB three that don't have advocates that really are in trouble that are basic, they're in basic trouble. And I guess I would include parts, at least some doing section by section, the Allen Street Mall would really be useful to the entire area. But yeah, I think that's good for now.
Thank you, Kay. Okay, let's see who else is ready. Anyone else?
Linda.
Linda has her hand up.
Okay, Linda. I can't hear you. You're on mute.
Let's chime in after Kay because although we do have allegedly an advocate group in Seward Park, in fact, we have many of the same problems. And, you know, they don't rise to the budget, but since we're talking about them a little bit, the spray shower never turns off. It runs day and night. You know, no speaking to the Parks Department about it seems to get it fixed. It used to have a button you pushed and it would run for a while, an hour or something and then go off automatically. That doesn't work anymore. The little fountain that Lauren referenced has been out of order as long as I've lived in the area. So it may not be just a repair. It may be a project. I don't know what's wrong with it. You know, that's the one where the seal heads broke off and the water is, doesn't work. And it would be lovely for the little children to have a place, you know, away from the larger children to play in the water. And our park house has had a, a once-over, a little lick of, of repair. It certainly looks a lot better because of Lower East Side Ecology Center is going to occupy it. But it's not the total renovation that it still needs in order to be a community space. So I think Kay and I share many of the same issues. We might be a little better off than you are, Kay. You have a bigger homeless problem than we do. We have it, but, you know, it's basically along the Essex Mall and we spoke of the safety issues there because the, the shrubs have grown so tall that it's a, it, you know, it's great. It's a bathroom. It's a place to shoot up. It's, you know, not a nice place, so.
Can I, can I just clarify that for us, the, a lot of the homeless population helps us clean the park? The issues for us are the, are the drug dealers and the people who are mentally struggling and dangerous. So those are real things that frankly, pep is never there. So I, you know, I, I just wonder, this is a, this needs a different, you know, venue, but I think we need a venue.
The Parks Committee could just have a town hall about this stuff for all of the parks in the community because I'm sure we all share the same issues.
If I could suggest that if people are asking for budget requests related to this, so particularly in the Seventh Precinct, they don't have resources to respond to everything. So I think police resources could be one budget request that you're asking for. I think also on homeless outreach, these are not parks issues, but they're agency issues on homeless outreach.
Pretty good job, by the way, Susan. I, I have great respect.
They have said, they have told us that they don't have the resources.
Well, yeah, so like get them more by all means, but with what they have, they do a great job.
Yeah, they do, but they are saying they could do better if they had more resources. So I'm suggesting that as a budget request.
Generally speaking, park maintenance staff. I mean, I don't see maintenance people anymore in the park at all. Trash cans, that kind of stuff. It's a common problem.
Park maintenance staff is absolutely a huge need, which parks admit. And I was gonna say, the other is homeless outreach because they are saying they are now sometimes don't have the staff to respond to everything and also like an SDR park because of the safety issue, which really is a lot worse than SDR. They have to go three in a team instead of two, which takes up more staff. So those aren't parks issues, but they are budget issues that you can ask for.
And Susan, that's also true of park maintenance staff. They can no longer go with just one person. They at least have to have two people, so.
I, I would personally suggest that you make parks maintenance much higher on the list this year.
I agree, I agree. Because there are the parks that are really, really struggling with, you know, we've had stabbings, we've had physical attacks, we, you know, murders, a lot, a lot. And, and we've seen this before in the seventies and eighties. And um, and we've seen this before in the seventies and eighties.
Yeah.
Uh, once you tip that scale, it's, it goes and uh.
I'm just trying to suggest how, how to address it.
Yeah, yes. No, that was, that was uh, very, actually very helpful. I also wanted to add though, there's the Bruckner box issue where some parks, uh, I know the spots in my park, but there are other parks that they said they would tell us which parks don't have Bruckner boxes, which means you can't water plants. Um, and uh, and it's a, it's a fairly big issue and I wonder if that could be a holistic issue for all the parks um, that need them, so.
Working Bruckner boxes.
Broken, right?
Yeah, working, ones with.
Oh, working, yeah. Uh, Paul, your hand was up?
Yeah, just two things. Kay, for the minutes, I just want, can I put, what's the name of the park again on your end? I missed it at the beginning.
Uh, Sarah Roosevelt.
Okay.
And we've also talked about the Allen Street Mall.
Got it.
But I, but again.
We also support that.
It, but I would also, you know, I think Susan's well aware, but there are so many parks that have zero advocates. And at least we can make noise. Uh, not that it always gets you things, but as Susan said, it doesn't, you don't get it without, so. Um, but I would love for us to really target those parks ahead of some of the other things that feel more, I won't say luxury, but luxury, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Alicia, I did have one other thing. Um, so I, I know the transportation committee in like a couple of weeks, we're gonna hear something about garbage. Um, affecting Lower East Side, but these villages left out on this one. Um, because I know the bid only works with that, a certain part, but the garbage is just as bad up here too. We're not getting as many garbage collections up here. Um, garbage is piling up. Somebody sent me a video the other day about a restaurant throwing garbage in front of the projects because they didn't want to get their stuff picked up. So now it was affecting all of that. Um, it's pretty bad. Uh, so it's just, we're not getting enough pickups for garbage and it's getting the rat problems. No, they're just, they're hanging out. Hanging out like everybody else. They're playing, they got their own domino table. It's uh, it's.
But did you send the video to me?
I'm gonna, I just got it. I'm gonna send it to you.
So um, just let everyone know you're, I mean, it, it's horrible. And I take picture, I actually took about ten pictures of garbage yesterday to send to sanitation. Um, unfortunately, I tend to do that just in my area. Um, so I really would appreciate it, but I did bring this up at the budget consult. I said it was filthy. And um, I got a call from our district superintendent afterward um, saying that he was told to absolutely pay attention to the areas I give him. So please give me those areas. Yes, we absolutely need more pickups, um, top of the list. Um, but in the meantime, please, please send me those pictures.
You want our garbage pictures? I have, I am so happy to hear that.
But how else do we, I mean, they will actually.
We need them.
They will actually come out and respond within twenty-four hours. If there's like a big pile of garbage. Um, I, I do this every weekend and they will take a picture and say, we picked this up. I do it in front of the school next to me all the time.
Oh, I know.
So great. And uh, and I just, I'm curious there, we do have some bids. I know that part of my, of SDR Park is covered by Chinatown bid, but most of it isn't. And the Lower East Side bid didn't want us to feel a little insulted, but um, but I'd be curious where the bids are and uh, at some point.
I think, well, Columbus Park, when we approved the bid down there, it was with the, the community board said it was, they would approve the bid with the provision that they never went in the park. So they don't want them. Um, so I, I know for that park, um, sometimes there's union issues. Um, I know um, Carlina's office had, wanted to put discretionary money into cleaning up Tompkins Square. And they weren't allowed to because the city doesn't allow that to happen if it is that fits the same job as city workers, so they can do things like sweep the streets because city workers don't do that. But they can't go in and clean a park.
Tim, I'm sorry, I saw your hand a while ago. Did you wanna say something?
I'm actually with the dog group too, but I think with every other group as well, um, I just happen to own a dog. Um, and I think the big issue is like really just having, like right now, we're using that Coleman Field and it's the really, the, the main thing is that it's just grass. It's natural grass and dirt and it's like, and I equate a hundred percent with the whole park thing. Um, because it's like, you know, I think like, like he was raised in Washington Square Park, my dog. Um, actually wrestling these doors deep there, we used to hang out all the time from community board too. And she's, and it's like, and it was like a great experience to have him in, running in the grass in the park over there. Um, and then so when we moved here, there's just no grass. Um, and we've gone to Seward Park and we know that there's not, we're not, but there's always people there. So unless it was really late, we don't, we wanted to respect that. Um, but hearing everyone's issues here, it's like, obviously, like right now until like, you know, I think budget things, we would like to figure out ways to solve. Ways to get things paid for like that, whether it's fundraising or whatever and things like that. Um, and respect that. So if anything, just, I think just to keep using the park would be cool. And then invite you guys down to come to meet our dogs because I think the coolest thing, actually since moving here is compared to all the other dog parks like Tompkins or Washington Square Park. Everyone knows each other in this community. They've met each, and it's like, it's really cool. It's probably the most cohesive I've seen in an area where people just have broken like every, you know, bear and just meat over their dogs. This is actually a really cool thing. So that's all I wanted to say. Sorry, I knew that was like editing. At a turn, sorry.
Thank you, Tim. Um, okay, let's see who's next. Anyone?
Alicia, not, not so much of something a budget priority, but I heard something that Kay and Linda referred to earlier about lighting. I don't know if that's something that we can put under the public safety agenda or not.
We're, we're already, we're.
If it's already in the works, then.
Yeah. That lighting situation has been going on for a while, uh, Paul.
It is, it is, it is a DOT issue actually, um, in the parks because DOT is supposed to be involved, but it's um, it's a complaint that I don't know why it hasn't been done, but I'm gonna be honest, it's just so much going on. It's been hard to follow up on everything.
So I want to make sure that we remember that we're here to talk about the budget. I, I know we're getting personal, but we really need to focus ourselves on the budget and the priorities of the budget. So can we refocus our energy back in that area? Thank you so very much. Um, who's next to talk about a budget priority? Well, I know everyone didn't come out just to listen to one another.
No, actually, some of the people, I see some students on here that did come to listen.
Oh, okay. All right. I would not know who's a student. Um. Uh, so Riley, you're here from Lower East Side Harm Reduction. Is there something you'd like to, for us to prioritize? Are you a student or are you here as a agency?
Yeah, as an agency, but I'm here to help. I'm just learning everybody, getting to know everybody. I have no budgetary needs at the moment.
Great. Never say that, Riley. I'm kidding. Okay, um.
Looks like that's it.
That looks like it's it then. Wow, amazing. I, I've never, uh, I don't think I've ever seen this happen before. Uh, okay.
Well, let me, uh, Susan, let me just ask, uh, follow up, follow up Paul. Um, the, the lighting issues in the parks, you're saying it's mostly, um, I know it's DOT and it's mostly because of overwhelm. But you, you and I both know, we've asked for a lot of this for several years and um.
I didn't say they were overwhelmed. I said I was.
Oh, no, no, I, I think I got that part. Um, I'm just wondering if, like with a number of these issues, it isn't, they don't rise to the level of funding for one park. But there is CB three wide, uh, I'm wondering if there ever is a collective sort of question like we do with other parks, things like um, the urban park rangers or the, this cleanup crew or the tree pruners or.
What I would say is more of a staff issue, if you want to go to budget, it's a staff issue. It's not a, there is no funding issue with lights. There's no problems with funding for lights. I think it's more of a staff issue of people following up and doing it. And I think.
So do you have recommend?
I think almost every agency right now is suffering from dire lack of staff. And it's not, again, not just a funding issue. People, park, park staff, they have a huge percentage of people not coming to work every day.
Yeah. Well, you, so is there, is there any advice you would give us for, what's curative there? Do we ask specifically to raise people salaries? I mean, what can we do?
I don't think it's even raising salaries. I think this, I don't know the answer, Kay. Um, I think we're in terrible shape. I'm waiting to see if things change drastically in a few months. Um, but I think we need, we need to focus, um, you sort of brought this up. Um, but we seem to certainly to prioritize our issues and focus on them.
Yep. Yeah, definitely. Um, so if that's all, we're going to conclude tonight's uh, budget priorities meeting for CB three for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, and I thank you all for your coming out tonight and being in attendance. I hope you all felt like your voices were heard and I look forward to seeing you all if you can attend tomorrow's school board meeting. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Alicia. Thanks, Susan.
Thank you, Paul, for taking minutes and thank you. Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
See you all tomorrow night.
Thank you. And we're working on the needles, believe me. Every week we're working on a needle situation.
Good night.
Good night.